Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order this regular city council meeting for August 23rd, 2021. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A diligence to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands one nation under God, indivisible.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. As we go through the roll call, please remember to state your location for tonight's virtual meeting. Councilmember Kennedy.
President, City of South Lion.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble.
Here in Southland.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton.
Good evening. I'm here in the City of South Lion.
You, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Present, City of South Lion.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill.
Present, City of South Lion.
Councilmember Richards.
I'm present in the City of South Lion.
Thank you. I am also present and I am in the City of South Lion at City Hall this evening. That will move on to the approval of the minutes from August 9th, 2021. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to move the minutes. I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion passes. No bills this evening, so we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Kennedy.
Move the agenda.
A second.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Councilmember Richards.
Uh, I would like to see us remove cemetery grading bid from new business number two. Reason being, the bid is not perfected yet. Uh, this, this is, there's more to this. And this is not a piece of durable goods. This is a cemetery that lasts a lifetime of forever. Okay, that's my reasoning. Uh, there's gonna be some arguments about it and why, let's, let's do it another time.
Uh, well, Councilmember Richards. If there seems to be a discussion to be had about it, tonight would be a proper start to that discussion, so. I. I don't think that we should remove it. I would put it to anyone else that has any comments on it. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with the mayor's position is that it's on the agenda. Uh, and we can have an opportunity during discussion of that item on the agenda. And if the council member's arguments are persuasive and he is able to carry the debate, then I would say that, that maybe the motion would not pass. But if the arguments are not substantial or there are issues that can be rectified after the vote is taken, then we can move on. So I would continue to keep this on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Did anyone else have any feedback on, on Councilmember Richards in the agenda? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I just think we should have the discussion, so.
Um, okay. So now, Councilmember Richards, if you'd like to make a motion to, to remove it, you can see if there's support there. I'm not gonna stop you.
Okay, I'll remove my complaint, just that I can see that we're gonna have quite a discussion and things aren't gonna be smooth. Thank you very much. I'll remove it.
All right, well, I look forward to the discussion in adult-like manner. Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. I did just find a misspelling in the meeting minutes from the previous meeting. Is it too late to have that fixed? We did vote and approve them.
Right. City Attorney Hamame, is there something that we can do about that and walk that back?
I, I mean, it, it's just a typo, so I'm not concerned about fixing a clerical error.
It's the person's name, but that's fine. No worries.
No, no, I mean, it can, you can change it. I don't think you have to go through a formal motion to correct the minutes. If it's just a clerical error, I'm not concerned about it. So you can tell us what it is and it can be incorporated.
Perfect. Under council comments, undermine, it says Coach Payton. It should be Clayton, C-L-A-Y-T-O-N.
Excellent. All right. Thank you for that. Yeah. All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Dill to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Uh, tonight's consent agenda does include a downtown food truck rally. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you. I moved the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion passes. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address. And please also remember that each of our public comments are limited to two minutes. City Clerk Deaton, do we have anyone looking to participate in public comments this evening?
No one's raised their hand.
Okay. We will close public comment. And we will move on to the discussion of downtown with our DDA Director Nate Mack.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Uh, first of all, just start by talking about the food truck rally briefly, so you have a little more information on it. Um, it's a partnership between the DDA and Kensington Valley Chamber. Uh, we've got four food trucks lined up for the event. Uh, tried to get kind of a broader dispersion of types of food, so we have one that's a vegetarian vegan, one that does hot dogs, another that does stone-fired pizzas, and then finally Kona Ice for dessert. So I'm hoping that, uh, it's a good event for the downtown. It's over Labor Day weekend, but that was kind of the only date that I was able to get to work, so. Uh, so last week at the farmer's market, the, the vendor, or the market was full again. Our food truck, unfortunately, Bra Avampanada's was not able to make it. They had some generator issues. And we had the University of Michigan Housing Bureau for Seniors that was there. Uh, they were passing out some information on, on housing for seniors, so. Uh, we also had a roll to the market event on Saturday, which we saw, you know, a fair number of bikes come in and a few got some repairs done. Uh, additionally, at the direction of the DDA Board, I'm assembling a budget for what Cool Yule could look like this year. Uh, there's gonna, there will be no massive tree like there was in the past, but uh, Slayer is planning on doing the candy cane hunt as well as Dana Johnson is still working on the parade. Uh, we have gotten, uh, since my, since I sent out my report, we have gotten some uh, applications for the farmer's market manager position. Uh, there were five that I was able to kind of go over today, so hopefully we'll be uh, moving forward in that process. And then finally, last week, I attended the, uh, third quarter economic development partners meeting for Oakland County. Uh, that was at the Oakland County Farmers Market in Waterford. And they updated us on, you know, the different activities that they're doing and the funding that they have available for either childcare or helping people get back to work, uh, and a bunch of other different things, so. There's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Nate, two things. Well, one on the, um, uh, on the food trucks, who is helping you with that? Is there, do you need assistance or any volunteers or anything?
Uh, so yeah, I have a couple of volunteers from the DDA, but it would be good to get a couple of more because we have to have uh, people stationed at each of the exits, so people don't take alcohol outside of the fenced-in area.
Okay. And then, um, are there gonna be tables and things for people to sit at?
Yep.
That sounds fun. It's exciting. Um, the other thing I had was, um, I love hearing about talking about Cool Yule and the candy cane hunt and all that stuff, but I'm hoping that we are not skipping over um, a pet, uh, issue for me is the ladies' night. And I'm hoping that, um, that maybe in your DDA meetings that we can talk again about closing down that road and giving the ladies' night, um, you know, a little more space to operate in. And I just wanted to hear if you have discussed that.
Yeah, I have. I've discussed it with a few downtown retailers, um, kind of, you know, wanting to get the roads closed for that event, so I'm, I'm working with them to, to make that happen.
Okay. Do you thi- you think that that will be a possibility to do then?
Yeah, if we can, um, yeah, I think it is.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Okay.
Anyone else have anything for Nate this evening?
I have a question for Nate.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Richards, go ahead, and then I'm gonna come to you, Councilmember Kibble.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I've been, Nate, I've been asked by a couple of people to, uh, ask you this question and make sure it's get entered into the record because it's, they think it was omitted and it may, it may have been. Uh, first question, second and third. First one, who paid for this mural on the grand trunk? Second, what was the total cost if known? Third, is this type of thing a tax deductible item for the building owner? That's it.
Okay, uh, number one, who paid for the mural? Uh, Grand Trunk and DDA paid for part of it as well. Uh, the total cost is $5,000. And is this type of thing tax deductible? I don't believe it is.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I was wondering about, um, the liquor for the, the, uh, food truck rally. How is that, uh, who is it that's handling that? Is that recreation?
No, the chamber got, uh, yeah, they, they got a nonprofit license that they were able to pull to have it at that location.
That's terrific. And, um, Chief Sovik, have you kind of walked everybody through about what the, the expectations for harnessing the area off will be? So that people aren't just summarily walking around town.
Right, yeah, it'll, it'll be fenced in. Yeah, so we, on the map, it'll be fenced, like, or the area, the parking lot will be fenced in. So that people will know not to, and we'll put signs up that says, "No alcohol beyond this point," and we'll have people standing at exits to make sure no alcohol goes beyond that point, so.
The police department will also have a presence down there. You'll, you'll, you'll see us.
I had, I had assumed that. I just wanted to hear it out loud, so. All right, um, and to get in, you, uh, like our miners obviously can get in, they just simply won't, won't be able to be exposed to the liquor, right?
Yep.
Yep. Thank you very much.
All right, great. Thanks for the update, Nate.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the fire chief report and coming out of the bullpen tonight for Chief Vogel is Deputy Chief Weir. Good to see you.
Hey, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, I only have, uh, one item tonight. Chief Vogel does apologize for, uh, being able to, on, not being able to attend the meeting this evening. He's, uh, far north in Canada, and I don't think he has access to internet where he's at, so. Uh, I'm feeling informed tonight. Um, the only thing that I have for you guys tonight is, uh, we have tentatively scheduled our pre-construction meeting for the latter. Uh, that's gonna take place mid-September in Charlotte, Michigan. Uh, it'll be myself, Captain Armstrong and Sergeant Buchanan attending that. It's, it's expected to take about two full days, uh, with their engineers, and then we'll move on to, uh, the cab chassis build.
Excellent. Does anyone have anything for Deputy Chief Weir this evening? Go ahead, Councilmember Kibble.
I imagine you guys are on pins and needles thinking about all the goodies that you're gonna wanna put in there.
Yeah, it's, it's certainly exciting. Um, this is, you know, this is probably a once-in-a-career purchase for me, so. Being able to, to have my hands in it and really make sure it's done correctly to best serve the city is, is really an honor and exciting for us, so.
That's terrific. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Deputy Chief Weir this evening? All right, thank you. Great job filling in tonight.
Thank you.
Head over to the police chief report. Chief Sovik, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got a couple of things for you this evening. I just wanted to welcome our new city mechanic, uh, Ryan Rose. He's been with us for a couple of weeks, uh, just kind of getting caught up on some things that were backlog, but uh, doing a great job. He seems to be very energetic about what he's doing and, uh, the turnaround on some of our fixes and repairs are really good, so welcome, Ryan, and it's good to have him with, uh, the city now. Um, the veterans memorial, the committee is going to still plan on presenting, uh, the first responder memorial presentation on the September 13th meeting, so that's still, uh, that's still intact. And also apparently there's about, in about $5,000 that has already been pledged toward the total cost of this, um, uh, this, this project, so looking forward to seeing, showing you guys what they're coming up with and, and some details about that, so we're excited about that. Uh, also, you guys actually have a copy of the, um, uh, the South Lion, the, the speed study report that, that is in your packet. Um, this was brought to our attention to, uh, actually just kind of go over and, and look at the speed limit on the west 10 mile between Washington Street and Dixboro. And I provided some, uh, some pictures and some history, some signage, some details, accidents, and, uh, some other information, some speed study information, and um, just to say, I mean, I don't have a dog in this fight, the police department, whether it goes to 25, it goes up to 40, it remains at 35, we're still gonna enforce, you know, whatever we see, whatever, uh, you guys decide to do with this, but, um, obviously, the data that we have shown over 100,000 recordings of speeds indicate that the 35 mile an hour speed limit is appropriate for that area. Um, now, saying that, I've also made some recommendations at the end of the, uh, at the end of the study, um, as far as what we can do to possibly slow down some of the traffic there, but um, Paul and I have had some discussions with TIA and, uh, TAA has some contacts over at the Oakland County Road Commission, uh, who actually was familiar with the changing back in 2010, the city council that they passed a resolution to increase it to 35 miles per hour back then, so. A lot of information here, uh, and a lot of recommendations that have been made, so, um, I, I would say the, um, the individual from TIA who we spoke with actually used to be an employee for the Rockin', the, the Oakland County Road Commission, who is familiar with this particular stretch and, and some of the work that was done prior to this, so, um, uh, if we want to con- continue with it and actually have the Oakland County Road Commission do an actual uh, speech study, they will actually bring in the Michigan State Police, uh, and they will do their own investigation. He, he, he strongly recommends not doing so because if the MSP, the Michigan State Police, come in and do their performance, their study, there's a good possibility that it's not going to be, um, 35. It could go down to 30 or it could go up to 40. Um, but that's not gonna be just that stretch of 10 mile that we're talking about. It's gonna be basically uh, that's the stretch of 10 mile through the city. The downtown will remain 25 miles per hour, but on the, on the outskirts of town where it's 35, it may increase to 30, it may increase to 35, it may go down to 25. I, I don't know, but it's kind of like rolling the dice to find out what's gonna happen, because if they come in there and they spend the time and the money to do so, um, they're gonna probably make some changes. Um, that was what he passed on to us, but uh, there are some recommendations I made at the back. If you guys have any questions, Paul and I will be, we'll try to answer them for you. If you have any questions or concerns about the study itself or anything else, then please feel free to fire away.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just had, I didn't quite understand this. It sounded like a little bit of circular reasoning when I was reading this, and maybe I just don't get it. Um, so it said that you recommend that it stay, the recommendation was that it stays at 35 because of a few different things, but one of them was that people weren't going over that speed limit or something like that, so it sounded weird. Like people, it sounded like, uh, you know, people are gonna go the speed that, that is posted. So I just didn't understand that part.
Well, not always. I mean, we, we were accused of having 25 of that being quote "the honey hole" or the speed trap when it was 25, because we could literally pull people over all day long when the speed was 25. Uh, you know, when it's been, when it increased to 35 miles per hour, we really, not that we can be there 24, you know, hours a day, you know, recording, but for the most part, very few speeding tickets, uh, were given out over the last 10 years, over 35 now. There were, there definitely are some people speeding, uh, obviously depending on what time of the day that is, what the circumstances are, but I would recommend keeping it to 35 because just basically about the speed that there's a good possibility based upon the numbers that the PD recorded on the westbound traffic that the 85th percentile was 39 miles an hour, and if they keep those numbers, there's a chance that they're gonna increase it to 40 miles per hour. So it all depends on where the speed study is actually done and where exactly the data is collected from.
So if people are speeding in a area, then they would be rewarded with a high, I mean, that's what doesn't make sense to me, so. People aren't gonna go lower, so the, the concern was from the, I know that some of the residents that talked that, that it should be lower, so I don't understand, um, having a speed. I don't understand a recommendation being that we shouldn't change the speed limit because people are going higher than that. Am I making, I, I know I'm not making sense. I'm trying to.
No, what I'm saying is, out of the basically over 100, over the 100,000 recordings that we have of various speeds. The 85th percentile westbound was 39, eastbound was 35. That's what the, the Oakland County Road Commission speed study is gonna look at when determining what the appropriate speed for that area is. So if that's, if it's gonna be determined to be 37 miles an hour, there's a really good chance they're gonna increase that to 40 miles per hour based upon this data they collected.
But that's the part I don't understand, that they're gonna base raising the speed limit because people are speeding?
In the posted speed limit of 35 miles per hour, y- yes. If we wanna bring this to them and think that we, it needs to go down to 25, they're gonna do the same thing that we're doing, collecting data on the vehicles back and forth eastbound, and they're gonna make a determination. That's not my rules, that's, that's how, that's how they conduct their business.
Okay, it just, and you're just never gonna get people, you're not gonna get a huge amount of people going under the speed limit. So there's no way using that kind of data that the recommendation is gonna be, okay, let's lower the speed limit. I mean, do, does that make sense what I'm saying?
Well, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure it out, but I know that if, if they come there and do their own, their own speed study, and they get the same results that we get, it's not gonna go down to 25 miles per hour. And when the police department can't change the speed limit down to 25, it's gotta be a road commission because it's, it's a county road. I'm just bringing information to you to basically saying, if they, if they have a speech study and they come out and they collect the same data that we did, there's a really good chance it's gonna go to 40 miles per hour, based upon.
It just seems like, all I'm saying is, it seems like a weird way to assess a speed limit based on people not following the speed limit. It, it seems weird to me, like, it seems like you would wanna base it on safety, or, and, and some of it was, I, I saw that it was on safety, but it seems like a strange way to assess a speed limit based on if people, because you're never gonna get people going under. You're never gonna be like, oh, 80% of the people are going 25 miles an hour, so we should lower it. That's not gonna happen.
That is correct. I can't disagree with you.
If I can, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, city manager's only, go ahead.
The 85th percentile is used because that is how they determine what the speed limit should be, and it's based upon people will drive the speed that they feel is appropriate for the area. That's why sometimes in downtown streets or subdivision streets, when the trees are close, when you have parking on the streets, like was, what was recommended, vehicles and people in traveling will normally slow down. They will not drive at an excessive speed. These individuals, the 85th percentile was determined, and most people drive at that speed based upon their surroundings, so it's not rewarding them for that. If you posted at 40, people still, or posted at 45, people may still drive at 30 or 35 miles an hour because they are driving with the surroundings and what they see. We are not rewarding them for that.
I know, I, rewarding wasn't the best word, but I, I think, I find, I just think it seems like a very strange way to make that assessment. Because you're never, we're, we're wanting an assessment done to see if it should be lowered, and you're never gonna, you're never gonna get people going that much under the speed limit, even if it's surroundings.
Well, some of the recommendations that were made were to put certain things in place that would perhaps bring people to a lower speed. If you put parking on the streets and put cars on the streets, people as they drive through will drive slower because of the surroundings. Just like when you have a wide-open section of roads, people normally speed up on the roads. Whether the speed changed in an area where there was a lot of covered trees or there are cars that were parked on the roads, that's what, that's how they drive, and that's the recommendation, and we spoke with TIA. They said, you know, you're gonna be rolling the dice on this. They could be raising that speed limit, and they, if they're gonna do a speed thing, they are gonna look all the way from Dixboro Road, and they're gonna go east towards Novi. They're gonna look at that whole section of road. So there could be potential raises in speed along that whole area. And that's why we went through this data and determined that the best recommendation was, based upon chief's review of it as well as TIA, was to keep it at 35 for that section. But there are improvements that we can make, removing, putting certain signage and putting the parking and getting rid of the passing lanes, things like that, that we feel that would help assist in people coming into downtown or leaving and staying at close to 35 as possible.
Are those, uh, recommendations that you think that we will implement, or we're just considering?
We're ma- we're making those recommendations to implement those changes.
Okay, thank you.
You know, we, once, if we do make the recommendations, then we, we put the park and designated parking, we ca- you know, we get rid of the, uh, the, you know, the, the pass with care signs, because listen, you know, as a police officer, when I say, you know, when it says pass with care, the first thing you wanna do is speed up to get around the person going slow in front of you. Well, you remove those, you, you have the center double yellow line that's solid yellow. Uh, you take away some of those things, you enclose the space by putting the designated parking spaces in there, and then we can continue taking those, uh, you know, we can take speeds every couple of years to find out what the 85th percentile of the speed is, and if, if it comes down to where those numbers do come down because of the changes that we, that you, that you make or the recommendations that we make, there's a possibility it can change in the future, after we're making those, those changes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Chris, I thought you did a really good job of, of doing the analysis of, and justification of what your, your recommendations were. Uh, one thing that I did, did wanna bring forward though was the, the idea when you got to the nine, or 39 mile per hour was more when you were getting down towards Hagedorn, where people were escalating from Washington and ultimately getting up to, to go above the speed limit once they got, you know, down the street a bit, so. Um, I think if, if MSP were to do the same analysis at Hagedorn, their 85th percentile would almost certainly be the same if it were taken with better proximity to the downtown, where it's, that is the transition point. Um, I think you might end up having a, a different thing, as you had kind of alluded to in the, in your document.
Possibly.
Yeah, that it was, I forgot what it was, uh, 2027 or 29 or something like that. Yeah, so, um, uh, one thing that I, the other thing that I wanted to say was, I'm, I'm kind of stricken by the notion that we've got neighbors that have 25 mile an hour, uh, significant amounts of 25 mile an hour roads. And I think one of the biggest distinctions, and this, this is very controversial, but, uh, one of the biggest distinctions is that they are much more apt to be pulling people over that are speeding than we are. We have the, a more educational kind of view of things, you know, pull somebody over and give them a warning that, you know, you're ticking up and the, the speed limit is 35 and you're going more than that. Um, so, so people don't think nearly as much about the consequences of getting a, a speed limit ticket in South Lion as uh, the North Hills and the Plymouth and places that are rather rigid in their adherence to making people toe the line about what their speed limits are. And we've never been that com- that, uh, city, you know, I mean, every, from Chief, Chief Smith and, and through Lloyd and now you. Everyone has just been trying to educate people that are driving through our town to use common sense and don't, don't get crazy about the way you're driving. Being somebody that lives in this corridor, you know, obviously, when you're, I, I don't have the same misgiving that an awful lot of my neighbors do, where they have to back out into the street. And when people are going 35 miles an hour, it's a, a, a great deal more of a challenge to end up safely getting through that or in any reasonable amount of time at, at the very least. Um, so that, between that and I, I I remember reading what your access point count was. I don't remember, like, did you do a breakdown what from Washington to Hagedorn, the distance of that, and find out what, what the uh, commensurate calculation for the per mile that the, uh, MSP's, uh, limit has?
Yeah, it, it's actually not quite a mile, um, but I did give you a breakdown of the intersected points. I wanna say there's a, there's 50 between the streets, north and south, you know, all the way down, and the driveways. I believe there's 20 driveways in. Between the streets, north and south, you know, all the way down and the driveways. I believe there's twenty driveways on the north side and nineteen on the south side. Then you have eleven points of, of intersection from the streets, including Washington all the way down to Dixboro. So there's fifty. Fifty points of, of intersection right there, but it's not quite, not quite a mile. It's like, I want to say it's like three.
That's not actually my point. My point is getting something that's a parallel with the ratio of, of distance. To points of access. So it, if, say this is a quarter of a mile from Washington to the Hagedorn area. If you had, if you were to determine how many points of access there are in that. And uh, divide that, that distance. So you'd get a ratio that the one mile to whatever the MSP's number is.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that, that I think is a, a truer understanding of whether or not we're compliant with what MSP's. Uh, intention for that, that ratio would have been.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I, I don't know how, I don't know how MSP is going to apply that. I think MSP, according to Oakland County Road Commission, they look at those, they look at those numbers unfortunately, but I can look at that as well.
Um, yeah, well, I, I'm, I'm sure my wife and some of the neighbors are going to be. Pretty disappointed, but as you said, I, I think it's, if. I, I wouldn't want us to end up getting so hard-nosed that, that we're really running. You know, running anybody down that's going over the speed limit, you know, at five miles an hour. I'd love to see them get a warning, but because this really is our linear neighborhood. And uh, when people are misbehaving, it'd be nice to have them get caught enough where they have to think twice whether it's worth. Rolling the dice and find out if the next time they're going to get a ticket or not. But I guess if there's some education that can be gleaned from this by, by some of the. You know, putting the striping, the parking spaces out on the road as well as some of the, the. Uh, cars being parked in the, the road would be helpful too. One of the problems is that although this does take care of trying to be commensurate with what the intention of speed was. The, the misgiving that I think an awful lot of the neighbors have is with the road being as wide as it is. Especially when there's seniors or people, moms that are crossing their children when there's not a crossing guard there. It's a longer distance to have to traverse before a car would end up coming into play. And if that speed limit were a little bit lower, it would soften that. The ability of uh, people getting across without having to be challenged by a car closing in on them, that's all.
I hear you. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, alright, well, thank you. I appreciate, I really did like your report and I thought you were, you played it very square. And straight, and uh, I think it's good advice. I'm hoping maybe sometime. There'll be an, another look at it and we could, you know, do another assessment whether a correction is warranted. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. If you guys want to, I don't know what, how you guys want to, uh, just let the city manager know about implementing some of these recommendations because we have to apply. You know, the, the fee, you know, the free permit, you know, for the parking spaces and just contacting the road commission to do some other stuff. As far as removing some of those pass with care signs. So uh, if you guys want to get ahold of uh, the city manager, then. And we'll, we'll keep in discussion about it and keep moving forward with it.
I sure really would like to reach out to the, the community. I know there's a number of people that probably have some suggestions. And uh, although it might not end up being reflected in the, the actual speed, it might end up being. Uh, an, an advancement of ideas about how to calm the speed. And, and make it easier to get crosswalks uh, that are safer than what we've got going now. So, alright, thank you very much.
Anyone else have anything for Chief Sobick tonight on the Police Chief Report? Alright, thanks a lot, Chief, for the update.
Yes, sir.
Onto unfinished business number one this evening, second reading to amend the sign ordinance to add language and requirements. Permit murals in the city.
Yes, hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the August ninth, um, city council meeting, we discussed um, and did a first reading of uh, language that would allow murals. Um, in non-residential um, districts within the city. Um, we did a first reading and that was approved. Um, tonight you have the second, um, you will do a second reading. Um, and as a follow-up to some of the discussion that we had during that um, meeting. We provided clarification to the placement of murals. Um, and that is um, written in section seventy dash seventeen E two placement. Where it states that murals are permitted on the rear or side wall of the building. Murals are not permitted on the front of the building, and then we further clarified that to say that. The front is the wall that is the primary entrance to the building. So that was in the planning commission minutes and it was um. It should have been in there and we just made sure it was, is more um, clearly identified um, without any ambiguity. Um, and then the second thing is that we had a discussion regarding um, copyright of the murals. Um, if they were used in photos or promotional information or media for the city. Um, I did work with the city attorney to come up with some language. Um, you have a copy of the um, proposed mural application. And on page three of that application, um, there is the um, agreement to reproduce image um, that was reviewed by the city attorney. Um, that we may use um, and have the property owner sign. Again, this is the second reading, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Golly, I appreciate you adding the additional clarification and the uh, addressing the concerns that were raised last time. I'd just uh, like to go ahead and make the, the motion approve the second reading of the ordinance to amend chapter seventy signs to include a new section. On murals.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Kibble. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Peltat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Onto new business this evening. New business number one, main police building emergency generator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you guys have the agenda note in front of you and some information, uh, just to give you a little bit of background. Um, we do not have a whole building generator as of right now. Uh, some of those that are close to the police station can certainly identify with the fact that. When we do have a power outage, we contact the water department who bring out this gigantic gas diesel power generator. And it literally keeps everybody up at night. I'm, I'm so blessed the people behind us don't ever complain about it because they know that we need to, do need the power, but. Um, you know, one of the downfalls that is like, depending on the, the outage, we have to keep on dumping diesel, diesel gas in there to keep that thing running, so. And even the fire department, they said we had to close the bay doors because it is just so loud. And so our last thirty six uh, hour. Uh, power outage, uh, just really kind of brought this to uh, to, to the front of the, the line. Although in a budget workshop, um, you guys did approve up to thirty thousand dollars for a whole building generator, so. Uh, we have the three quotes in front of you. We're looking at a four to six month for delivery and a five days to complete. Now that puts us basically, if we order it tomorrow, uh, that puts us at about December or February. And I had a friend of mine recently talk about, you know, the, the concrete issue. Uh, you know, the cold and the concrete don't go together, so contacted the uh, the SPS, the company that we're recommending going with the Generac generator. Once they get the contract signed, I give them a call tomorrow and we approve that, they're going to come out and they're going to take measurements. They're going to pour the concrete slab. Well in advance of the, of the generator. They have the dimensions of what we're looking for. Uh, they've done this hundreds of times and it's always a concern when there's a, when there's work being done in the winter time. So they can do everything else except, you know, pour that concrete, let it cure and set up and everything fine. So uh, once we get that, once we give them a go ahead and do it, project manager is going to come out. He knows the measurements of the generator, going to cut out the pad and, and dig and just put everything appropriately there to actually get it ready for the install. So uh, because of the uh, the generator, uh, the backup and the ordering four to six months and, and then hopefully we'll get it, you know, sooner than that. Depending how things go, but um, I'm recommending the SPS and the amount of, uh, well, the cost is twenty five thousand dollars, still over twenty five thousand. But we're also getting a service plan. Now, before I brought this to, uh, before I started getting bids. I have a, a good friend of mine that, that installs these on the side. And so basically I was looking for how big, you know, what kind. And uh, and the maintenance plan that we need. So SPS, they offer a certain maintenance plan going with the gold. Uh, we get ten percent off, uh, off the top if we just go with the three year. Uh, it's very limited, but uh, it's, it's going to be enough according to, to my friend of mine that, that does the stuff for, for on the side. So I'm just looking for approval to uh, to spend the money from the, the capital outlay. Uh, this comes in just under the thirty thousand dollars uh, for the generator and the three-year maintenance plan.
Councilmember Dilg, and then I'll come to you, Councilmember Kibble. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just two quick things. Have we never had a full, a, a generator for the whole building or did we lose one at some point? I think I, did I lose you guys?
No, actually, Chris.
I, I was lost by connection, so I'm back, sorry about that.
I just was surprised that we didn't have one. Um, have we never had one or we just, was this a replacement of one that we lost?
No, we actually, long time ago, many years ago, we had one of those, the pool, you know, the pool generator that could maybe keep the fridge running or a computer running. And then we.
Yeah, that seems like a big miss that we didn't have that. I mean, and just a quick question, I think you answered it already, but the, um, so the two were so close in price. Are they pretty much the exact same product?
Yes, they're both Generac, you know, and I got to say, uh, Mark Newmeyer, the guy that works out of SPS. Uh, he gave us all kinds of reviews and they were actually included in the original, but be, for, for, for paper purposes. It just got reduced from forty pages to everything, but there was a generation, there was a Generac and a Briggs and Stratton generator. Uh, the two that were very close with the Generac, pretty much the same exact thing. Uh, but the guy from SPS constantly reached out to us and said, hey, is there anything else that you need? His customer service was great and he's been in contact with us. He, he, he gave the first bid and so, uh, you know, we looked around and, and talked to some people that they did business for and they just seemed to be the right guy to go with.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Yep.
Councilmember Kibble?
Uh, well, actually, I wanted to just go ahead and make the motion. Uh, first I wanted to say that. Your, um, your comment about the generator and, and fire department grousing about that. Kind of reminds me of the, the bowling alley that's, that's calling the police because the, the old couple that live up above them. Are really too noisy. Uh, okay. Let's see, uh, I, I make a motion that we approve purchase installation and three-year maintenance plan for the generic. Or Generac generator from Specialized Power Services Inc. In the amount of twenty six thousand, six oh two and fifty cents from line item one zero one. There's three hundred dash nine seventy capital outlay.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kibble, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Any further discussion? Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Chief, I want to uh, to commend you on exploring that, that the, uh, they can do some of that prep work prior to the cold weather setting in. They can take care of that pad, probably get all the trenching for the conduit and everything else, so they can just drop it and hook it up. That'd be wonderful. So uh, appreciate you looking into that.
Absolutely, yeah. You know, my friend of mine knows a little bit more about concrete than I do and the, the weather and everything, so. Um, glad we made that phone call and they were just, they were very, very pleasing and very accommodating to make it happen for us during the winter.
Look forward to it.
Yep.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, as long as no one else has anything, City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote?
Walton?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Peltat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Onto new business number two this evening, cemetery grading bid.
City has gone out to bid twice, the new section eleven of the cemetery and also the grading of the future fields at the Volunteer Park. The first bid letting occurred in early spring of twenty twenty one. Unfortunately, no bids were received. We again went out to bid last month. And received one bid for the project. Unfortunately, the portion of the bid for the work at Volunteer Park was in excess of what we had budgeted and expected. We will work with our engineer to review the scope to determine if any changes should be potentially made to lower the cost for performing the desired work. In the meantime, we'd like to afford with awarding of the section of the bid for the work at the cemetery. I've attached a letter from engineers at HRC itemizing the bid information received, which outlines the cost for grading the new section eleven at the cemetery. Possible course of action, approve or not approve the war of the bid to Fonsen incorporating the amount of fifty nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty for the grading of section eleven. At the South Lion Cemetery. We'll be bringing this item back before council at a later date regarding a budget amendment after the project completion. And after all the work is done as well, because we do also have a monument project that's going to be going on at the cemetery after this. And also the repair of the roof of the building. So we want to make sure we can get all that completed and we'll know exactly what that budget amendment should come in at. This is originally planned to be in last year's budget, but because we did not receive any but bids, it's now going to be in this year's budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and our engineer from HRC, Mike Darg is here also.
Thanks for being here, Mike. Uh, Councilmember Richards, did you want to take the lead on this? Uh, since you had some questions about it earlier this evening?
Yeah, I'd be glad to, Mr. Mayor, oh boy. Uh, I'm. I'm in favor of the project getting done, but there's a, there's some serious uh, uh, questions about things. Uh, first of all, this bid, I've gone over it, is incomplete. It's not, uh, doesn't include a lot of other things, okay? We, uh, I'll, I'll start listing them down here. Mr. Darga, I hope you can uh, have comments on this. I don't see any actual contract presented to us at this time. I don't see any persist, uh, certificate of insurance. I don't see any time limit when this is supposed to occur. I don't see any performance bond that's required in case uh, of a malfunction of the corporation. Uh, in my opinion, this bid is too low and it's either a mistake or this person doesn't know what he's doing. Uh, we're not bidding on a piece of durable good that runs on gasoline. Uh, this is a permanent uh, fixture that'll last forever in our cemetery. Also, there's uh, we're supposed to get at least two other bids, I would think. And I think it's, behooves us to wait just a little bit more, okay? Till we can get somebody in there that uh, has had time to review it. Also, another point, there's nothing mentioned in this about when there's an ongoing funeral. Uh, going on in the cemetery. Uh, are they going to stop work or are they just going to keep on raising dust and noise, okay? It's not that I'm a particular type of person myself, but gee whiz. I think other people would, would have something to say and. Be complaining about noise and dust if the, the contracting work was going on while they're trying to bury their loved one or deceased persons in their family. Uh, again, I, I don't think this has been completely sought out correctly. I don't know if it's been advertised enough. It's, obviously, it's not a big item. A lot of the contractors don't want to deal with small stuff, but. We may get some action if we try from the contractor. Do- doing the, the uh, cl- Clement project, Cle- Clevan Project, the restaurant. Right on Pontiac Trail here in town. It's my understanding, I've been told that they're shut down right now. Because of a serious drain, drain issue where the storm drains are coming under the road and they're going to go, come over to our side. And we're going to be hearing something about this in the very near future and maybe they'd like to knock that bid out if they get a chance at it. In a short period of time, since they got all their equipment right here on site and don't have to move it very far. Okay, I'll uh, entertain any uh, discussion for Mr. Darga or any other council people. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. The uh, your comment there about the contract and the performance bonds and insurance. Those are typically not provided until after council awards the project. Um, so that, so step one would be for the contract to be awarded. Step two would be to put the contract books together and then the contractor signs the contract and. Signs the contract and provides all the bonds. So we're kinda. A little, you know, we're one step ahead of that right now. Um and as far as rebidding this, this is the second time we bid this project. It's the only bid we've gotten. Um. And we tried packaging it with the work at Volunteer Park to hopefully get, you know. A lower bid. Um so I, I mean, we, I think we've tried everything we can. We. Um and as far as working. Uh during a funeral, um that the contractor, this isn't a lot of work. It could be done, you know, in a few days. So the contractor would be required to, you know. Work within our schedule that we tell them.
Thank you very much for your answers, Mr. Darga. Uh and I'm sure you're very familiar with with uh. How the uh. Facts go and how things are done after the uh awarding of a bid, okay? But I uh I'm adamant in my opinion on this. I think it's been a major mistake. If we award this bid based on what little information we know and without getting. A bid from a a couple of other local contractors. Uh which I'm trying to come up with, but I haven't done too well. Either, but I'm sure there's there's contractors around here that look still looking for work. And I think if we do uh we promote it correctly, I'm sure we can get another bid from somebody. I think it'd be a major mistake. To award this bid prematurely at this time on something as important as our cemetery. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve the award of the bid to Fonsen Incorporated. In the amount of fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars for the grading of section eleven at the South Lion Cemetery Cemetery. Out of account number one zero one dash two zero nine dash nine seven zero.
Councilmember Kittle. Oh, you're muted, Councilmember Kittle.
I apologize. Uh I'll I'll second that. I did want want to ask Mike a question, know if I could.
Certainly.
Um did this uh did this bid seem pretty much in the ballpark of what you guys were expecting?
Uh yes, we were we were about fifty-five thousand and it came in at, you know, two hundred sixty. So, yes, at this day and age, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I just wanna remind everybody that uh we have a labor shortage out there. And if we have somebody that has actually bitted on a contract. And that person is proficient at what needs to be done. Um it it's always gonna cost a little bit higher right now during these times. Uh but I think we need to be thankful that somebody actually bitted on it. Uh I I'm just letting you know, I'm having a driveway poured. And um it took months to get a contractor in, months to get somebody just to pull up. Slab and and pour cement and we just started. Uh I contacted a a contractor for some masonry work. Uh and I have to give him a credit. He was very professional on his answering machine. He said, we will return phone calls after September seventh and begin booking for twenty twenty-two. So if that doesn't let you know, I mean, these are masonry, the the contract trade profession. We need to understand. They're not here. They left the state of Michigan. A lot of the contractors left during the lockdown. And they're down in Florida, they're down in Texas, they're wherever they're at. So we have a contractor shortage. Um I can impress upon council to, you know, how important it is that if you have somebody that can do the work. Uh don't let it go because. You don't know when you're gonna find somebody else to do the work. I'm just telling you, that's my personal experience the past six months. It's rough out there, so.
Thank you for that feedback, Councilmember Kurtzwell. We have a motion of a councilmember Kennedy, supported by councilmember Kittle. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Richards?
No.
Dill?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kurtzweil?
Yes.
Paul Chat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you for being here tonight, Mike. With that, we'll move on to the budget this evening. Did anyone have anything on the budget tonight? Okay. Uh we will now open the floor for our second public comment. Please remember to state your name and address and please remember the two-minute time limit. Uh City Clerk Deaton, do we have anyone waiting to participate in public comment tonight?
Uh no one is raising their hand.
Okay, we will close public comment and move on to the manager's report uh with city managers element.
Uh first of all, I wanna comment regarding last week, the concert in the park as well as the movie night was very successful in town. If it wasn't for the heat, um it would have been a little bit better, but it was a really good night out there. I gotta admit, a lot of people had a lot of fun. Uh the road improvement plan, I'm working with our staff and engineers and creating the timeline. It's gonna address all the processes. And milestones in preparation of placing this road village on next year's August primary ballot. Um remind council members regarding the NML convention, if you are interested, uh please let us know. Um we're gonna uh be getting a grant with our engineers to apply for forty thousand dollars to do a pathway and trailway master plan. This includes evaluation and accessibility study. This grant would fund the assessment and analysis. Of our pathways, trail and trailways, determine costs for improvements as well as recommendations on signage, parking, amenities. And et cetera for our whole trailway system. Uh Pontiac Road Drainage Study, I conversations last week with the road commission regarding the status of the drain study on Pontiac Trail. We expect to have a draft scope of the project prepared by the end of the month. We will then review it as a group to make sure we are requesting everything it has to be contained in the final version of this completed study. I wanna update council on the census data. I've attached some preliminary information. If any questions, you can still go to the census.org to gather more information. Um on that for the city of South Lion. And also regarding the local state of emergency, we are scheduled to come back before to meet in council in person on September thirteenth. We're continually monitoring ever-changing environment as relates to COVID nineteen. If necessary. Will address any changes we may need to require to to make based upon the local county, state or federal guidelines or mandates. We could could include potentially us having an emergency meeting or whatever is necessary to try to keep our residents, visitors and staff safe. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Okay, uh councilmember Dill and then I'm coming to you, councilmember Walton.
Thank you. Uh just a couple of quick things. Um on the pathway, trailway master plan that we're trying to get a grant for. I I assume that that will lay out a timeline for uh priority of um like sections to to fix.
Yes, it's what their recommendations would be in assessing each area to talk about dollars also, and we would work with uh those numbers to try to figure what would be the best sections to be done first.
Okay, so are we gonna wait um to do any improvements with what we budgeted this year until that we get that study done? Or hoping we get that study done?
I'm waiting for the analysis come back on from HRC regarding the identified area uh that's near Volunteer Park. That was within this year's budget. We're gonna coincide this with it to try to make the assessment exact numbers, but I'll update you as soon as I can on that.
Okay, and the last thing was, I just wondered if you had any updates on the crosswalk by the hotel, any uh dates or anything like that?
Oh, yeah, our uh Doug Varney had met our with a couple of different suppliers regarding the equipment and I know they're applying for the. Uh permit through the road commission because that is a county road. Um there was only one issue that we were dealing with and still trying to figure out how we're gonna address it was the crosswalk that is located on the east side of the road. There is a utility pole at the location where we wanted to put that crosswalk sign. And because there is a signal or lighting on both sides, we're trying to figure how we can address that. To ensure that that would be safe there on that side as well, so people could see it coming from both directions.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Walton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I just have a couple of quick things myself. Um Paul, we were talking previously with the resident about the property at six one, six six one eleven mile. You had said that the planning department sent back their plans with corrections and a request for additional information. Um that was in regards to a driveway and a parking lot. We received the additional information yet?
No, we have not. And so our ordinance officers are working with their planner as well as attorney regarding that particular violation. Because they have not submitted it within a timely manner.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing, I I know I've brought this to your attention previously. And I'm just gonna bring it up again. Um the construction site on Dorothy, the weeds are very, very tall. We would not accept that from our residents. We need to make sure that. We as a city of keep our properties updated too.
I spoke with DPW about that. They will be addressing that. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else have anything for city managers only tonight? All right, thanks for the update, Paul. We'll move on to council comments this evening. Uh councilmember Kennedy, why don't you leave us, lead us off here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh tonight, I wanna thank Amy Allen, the recreation director at SLARA. For partnering with the city and presenting the movie in the park on August twentieth. Had a couple of bounce houses and a variety of other activities for the kids prior to the start of the movie. And I also wanna recognize the uh our DPW crew, Ron, Trevor, Fred and Jeff. For setting up and taking down the movie screen and other equipment for that event. I also wanna thank Sponge Sugar Detroit for providing cotton candy for the attendees. Truly a generous gesture on their part. Next, I wanna thank the South Lion Kiwanis for again loading the loaning their equipment. And providing the food, so the concessions were available on August twentieth. For all the folks attending both the movie in the park and the concert at the historical village. I wanna thank councilmember Kibble, county commissioner Phil Wyper, city council candidates Lori Mosher and Alex Hansen. As well as Frank Fogarty and Julie Kennedy, who joined with me to uh provide the labor that evening, cooking hot dogs and popcorn. And distributing them to the attendees at the movie and the concert. It was truly a another great event for our city. Just a reminder that on Wednesday this week, we will again have the Lake Street Cruise in downtown, so plan to come and check out the uh. Great cars that will be on display and get dinner at one of the great restaurants. Uh also next, uh this Friday will be the last concert at the historical village for the season. And will feature the Leaky Tiki's, Jimmy Buffett uh cover band, so make plans to attend and have a great time there. And finally, Pumpkin Fest will be held on September twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth this year. And the Pumpkin Fest committee is in desperate need of volunteers for this year's event. So if you can help in any way possible, please go to www.southlionpumpkinfest.com. Forward slash volunteer and sign up. It takes a lot of volunteers to make this event a reality, so show this house, show that South Lion spirit and sign up today. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Kennedy. Uh councilmember Walton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually don't have anything tonight. I just wanna tell everyone to stay cool. I know that's getting some high jumps and. High humidity. Make sure you drink plenty of water, stay hydrated and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Walton. Uh councilmember Richards.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I can easily make it within two minutes tonight. Uh first off, I wanna let everybody know that uh. We need um more volunteers for our depot day. We are anticipating a serious parking problem. And we need monitors to direct traffic on Dorothy Street when trying to park for the event. Uh we have made arrangements for to use the Methodist Church parking lot. And the the parks and recreation is also going to make available the. The ice rink over on the other side of the park, okay, for parking as needed. Next item, uh. It looks like I I can scratch the urgency for a backup singer for our national anthem. It's been a problem in the past. We've contracted with a group to uh do the national anthem, a group of four. And uh we pay them money. Uh so it looks like we're gonna get it. Uh also, next year, we are making a very serious attempt to have. A booth at the farmer's market to sell t-shirts and historic items of our. Uh group of tapes, pins, toys and jewelry. And lastly, on the historical side. Uh all the vendors that we have contacted uh have certified that they will be there. Make a note of it that we do pay them, okay? And we've got about twenty-four, I believe, vendors lined up for our event, so that's a good sign. Uh but we always need some more people coming in if anybody wants to. Uh lastly, I have last two items. I wanna thank Mr. Doug Varney. For taking his time to show me the progress on the water plant expansion. And a description of the current problems today on Dorothy Street, okay? Um it was very enlightening. They got a water problem there at twenty feet down in that hole. And they've got four pumps going, three three-inch pumps and one four-inch pump. And they can't keep the water out. Uh. And they're waiting for a decision on whether they're gonna raise the bottom of the hole. Or uh just how they're gonna proceed with this. Uh they didn't anticipate this coming. Also, at the, I thank Mr. David Dave or Dave David of HRC Company. He was there. And he talked with me and uh Mr. Varney. And provided an explanation of the problems that they've had and the progress. And the anticipated timetables and the details are too extensive for me to go into. Uh but I'm fully in an understanding of what's going on. It's a major event for the city here, for all of us. To see this completed uh and progress at a timely manner. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Dill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I wanted to congratulate the witches hat for a successful Fury for a Feast event. Raising thousands for the blessings in a backpack and gleaners. Uh it was a great event, very fun, well attended, uh really hot, but uh they had some good food and and good drinks. Um I also wanted to point out and thank our our local businesses for supporting the witches hat and this event and which in turn. Um supports the uh the two charities. Um there's businesses like South Lion Cycle, Venue, Pins, Aubries, uh Bushes, Yard Card Ninja and more. Uh it's just really nice to see our businesses supporting each other. Uh it's really nice to see. So I just wanna say thank you to uh everyone who supported that event. Um I also wanted to echo uh councilmember Kennedy's call for volunteers at Pumpkin Fest. You know you're gonna be there anyway. You might as well stay a couple hours and and uh do a little bit of work. Uh they need some help on getting things set up. They need some help um selling tickets. Uh some help in the kids areas. It's really fun. Just uh go on Facebook and and uh search for uh South Lion Pumpkin Fest and they have a volunteer. Sign up list that you can uh sign up for. I volunteer every year. It's very fun. So uh let's make sure that we can have this event. You know, we're so lucky that we're able to do it this year, so let's make sure that we help it run. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Dill. Councilmember Kittle.
Uh it was a great weekend uh between the. Concert in the park and the movie and the um Fury for a Feast. Uh the ninth, the ninth anniversary of that, that, I mean, that's really remarkable that those guys have been sticking that strongly to. Uh just the whole mantra of reaching out to be able to help. Uh what do they call tame tame the hunger actually is what Gleaner's. Banner is, so I was, I was really enjoying that. It's always a great time, great, great music. A lot of the, you know, all of our, all your friends from around the city are. At some point going to be walking through there, so it was a lot of fun. Um that's actually all I've got. Thank you.
Uh councilmember Kurtzwell.
Chris, Mayor. Um a lot of us uh lost a really good supporter of South Lion in early August. Uh Karen Meadows. Served uh the Colonial Acres community for about thirty-five years, starting in sales and ending in property management. To all the residents at Colonial Acres who knew Karen, met Karen, worked or laughed with Karen, many of us send our deepest consolences to you. Karen served you well and cared so much about the residents at Colonial Acres. Next, um it was a very, very busy weekend. Uh I can tell you that the downtown was packed Saturday night. Uh down at the South Lion Hotel, uh and I just can't thank the people that are coming out in droves. And supporting all of our businesses on both ends of Pontiac Trail. Uh South Lion. Uh, South Lion Hotel was able to keep up with the, the, the crowd that was in there. Lake Street Tavern was humming. Uh, I just think that we are just doing a great job with all of our businesses. And, uh, the hotel, by the way, is breaking a lot of records down there. It'll be back again Saturday night. I'd like to thank, uh, DPW for turning the trees along Reynolds Sweet Parkway. The residents who walk along that parkway truly appreciate it, so I want to thank you for fixing a sidewalk also. Um, at Paul Baker Park. It was desperately needed. Most importantly, I want to thank all the new employees at DPW. I think we have two. You could have worked anywhere, but you chose to work in South Lion. We are a great city to live, to work in and to retire in. So thank you, gentlemen, for joining DPW and becoming part of our city. Uh, last, I just want to say, everybody, uh, stay safe, have fun, enjoy Labor Day. It's our last big holiday of the summer. And we will see everyone in September at all the great events that are coming to South Lion. Good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Uh, I will be briefed this evening. I just want to remind everyone. Uh, that the fall sports are kicking off for our local high schools. Um, you know, a lot of these kids haven't had the opportunity to play in front of the community, uh, going on almost two years now, so. Uh, if you get a chance to get out there and, uh, South Lion East is opening their football schedule on Thursday at home. The Lions will be on the road at Wald Lake Western, a tough, uh, opening opponent for Lions for sure. Uh, but excited to be able to see the kids get back out there and can be, compete and, uh, represent the community, so. Um, one last side note, and I was watching this before I came up here for the meeting tonight. Uh, Michigan has a representative from Taylor North in the Little League World Series, and they pulled off a great comeback this afternoon. They will be playing Hawaii on Wednesday, I believe at seven. So, um, you know, everyone put their Great Lakes hat on and we'll be rooting for the kids from Taylor North for sure. So with that, I want to thank everyone for a great meeting and I'll look for a motion to adjourn, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you. Move to adjourn.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Good night.